There we go. All right. At seven o'clock, we'll call the regular meeting of the Stevens Point Common Council to order. Clerk, could we get a roll call, please?
Christensen.
Here.
Shore is excused. Kemer.
Here.
Zerazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebohn.
Here.
Leek.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Fischler.
Here.
Morrow is excused.
And we do have a quorum, so we will continue. Those of you online, I need you to mute. And Director Lemke is coming in. I'm going to try and keep track of all this stuff again. Please join me in our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alden Niebohn pointed out that it has been two years since our last meeting that didn't involve Zoom or some other virtual environment or masks or something like that. So, I don't know, Happy Liberation Day or something. I don't know. We're not out of this yet, though, so be careful. A couple of things I want to talk about. We do have two presentations tonight, so I'm going to try and keep it as brief as I can while running all of this stuff. First thing I wanted to point out is that we have an election coming up, April 5th. I hope that you've taken some time to learn about the candidates and the items, and hope that you will exercise your right, and I think duty, to get out there and vote. Early voting starts at the clerk's office tomorrow morning during regular hours. And if that doesn't work for you, the in-person same-day voting will be on April 5th. There are several Easter events in the city. The Muzzy Broadcasting is going to be taking the annual Easter egg hunt. Most people think it's a city event, but it's really not. We participate. Parks Department participates in some of the infrastructure and helping out there. But this year, Muzzy Broadcasting is doing it. That is going to be at Midstate, and it is the Saturday before Easter. The Parks Department, last year because of COVID, had a Easter scavenger hunt where they had little plywood eggs cut out, and they did it at Iverson Park, so you could walk or drive with your family and stay out of distance or contact with other people. And we had some great prizes for that. You just had to take a picture of yourself with the different eggs. They're going to be doing that again, so watch our city website for details, as well as the Parks Department Facebook page. Trivia 52. I've been playing for forty, this will be forty-five years. World's largest trivia contest is happening again April 8th, 9th, and 10th. And what makes this significant is this is going to be Jim Oliva's last year of writing. Jim has been writing for forty-three years, I believe. And he's just separating himself a little bit more from the contest, getting someone new in there. Dave Colthers is going to be taking over as primary writer. And John Eckendorf is also going to be retiring from the writing since he had had most of his tenure with Jim. So, if you see Jim over the next couple of weeks, or if you play trivia, thank him for everything he's done for that contest and for the university's radio station. I can tell you, we've got like the number-one radio station in the country that's college-run. It's over thirty thousand watts of power, which is larger than some commercial radio stations. And it's all because of the contest right here in Stevens Point. And then lastly, after over thirty-seven years of service to the citizens of Portage County, twenty-four of those being with the city of Stevens Point, Lisa Yakush is finally retiring. She is our HR manager currently, and has served that position and the employees and citizens of Stevens Point very well. We thank her for her service, wish her well. She doesn't have any plans left, but I'm sure they involve the grandchildren and spending time with family. So, her last day will be April 1st. So, if you see Lisa, congratulate her and wish her well, as we all do here at the city. Item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing should register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is begun. We have no public hearings on tonight's agenda, so if there's anyone left who has not yet preregistered with Sandy, do so now. And seeing that no one's moving, I'm going to ask Sandy to bring those up, and we will move right on to item number four, which is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a non-agenda item. And we will start out with John Kanoki.
It's time for a change. We need more diversity, a difference of opinions. We need a change from this one-sided, leading, agenda-driven council. Please vote for the new candidates on April 5th.
Thank you. David Ayden.
Good evening. David Ayden, 1008 Matilda Street. I've come to understand that when referring to the four-lane road project, the north section of that is what we're going to be starting with, because there was a timeframe involved with that. And looking at that section of the road, it appears to be probably the newest and most recent one, and it appears to be in quite good shape. We could possibly incur some taxpayer savings by maybe reviewing that and foregoing some of those options. I would suspect the utilities underneath the road are in fairly good order also. What comes to mind, though, is from Fourth Avenue to, I believe it's Briggs, which is south of the YMCA, that two-block section should be incorporated also because of the fire department there. And, you know, if they're talking about a roundabout at Fourth Avenue, that's still extremely problematic with some of the heaviest pedestrian traffic we have in the county at that intersection. So, I would certainly hope that that's at least reviewed, and we would consider action on saving the taxpayers some money in that regard. And let's undertake what would benefit that two-block section by the fire department and the YMCA, which is heavily trafficked also, still needs to stay four lanes. Because anything less than four lanes creates a serious safety issue throughout the community. Traffic's going to be going on side streets that don't see that type of traffic trying to get around. And nobody's going to convince me that you're going to have less traffic or the same traffic flow with a two-lane road. So, I think that is an opportunity to save some money and get that initial section done. Keep it within that timeframe. And also, I don't know if the Police and Fire Commission has any involvement with the plan either. Maybe that's somebody you would want to consult, especially given that fire department is there. That big ladder truck is always a consideration. They have trouble getting in and out of there with that truck at times, too. Two lanes would just be a disaster for them. And when it comes back down to safety, which, end of the day, I will always stand forth. You know, Mike Lucas here again. He's in support of the four-lane. We need to consider safety and the aspect of safety in that regard. Let's get that section done. So, now you're only talking from, I believe it's Ellis North, that section will be done up to the roundabout that is by the Sentry facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kevin Flatoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try and get through this as good as I can. I'm not really prepared. I just came from the auto auction, and my brain's fried with the numbers from a lot of expensive vehicles. But what I'd like to talk about today, everybody, is diversity, or actually the lack thereof when it comes to the Stevens Point City Council. We have eleven members on the council. Ten of them are either work for the university or directly linked to the university or hold public-sector jobs. County Marathon. One's a Democrat crab pack analyst, et cetera. So, to have a successful and productive city, you need a city council and government that is diverse. Okay? Right now, and it's funny that I have ten digits, because we have ten city council members. And thank you for your time and putting in your effort. It's a thankless job, but they're very tight-knit. And there's a reason that the votes go ten to one most of the time. So, what I'm hoping for is in the upcoming election, April 5th, there are six really good candidates running that are not linked to the public sector, and these people are giving up their time. And what that will do, if they get elected, it will make our city council more diverse, the city of Stevens Point more productive, and more successful. In District One, we have Stefan Klein, a business owner. In District Two, we have Corey Keeler running, a business owner. In District Four, we have Dave Krieger running, a retired union worker for American Asphalt. In District Six, we have a very honorable police, retired police officer in Ron Carlson running. In District Eight, we have Dean Shuda, a prominent business owner and a man who has helped many grieve through family pain over the years, including my two parents. Thank you, Mr. Shuda. In District Ten, we have Bob Larson running, a retired salesman and also an Air Force veteran. Now, if we can get four to six of these people through the election, get them on the Stevens Point City Council, everybody, we will have a nice, diverse city council that's going to work for everybody. Okay? I'm running for District Three, County Board Supervisor, and I'm hoping the same thing for the county board, that we make it more diverse. People come up to me. I ran into two people at the grocery store this weekend. They're like, Kevin, do you really want to do this? And I'm like, it's funny. I should tell you a few stories about the bullying I've been taken since I decided to run for office. And believe it or not, some of it has come from two county board supervisors. One of them, on his Facebook page, called me a drunken used-car salesman. And the guy's a retired professor. He's like ninety years old. You'd think he would have a little more respect. The other one came up with Flatoff's follies, where they all met to try and plot against our referendum. And he also, on his Facebook page, after last Tuesday's county board meeting, put up that I threatened his life and tried to run him over. So, do I want to run? Absolutely. I want to help our county out. And when they put up stuff like that, everybody in Stevens Point knows me, likes me, and respects me as a businessman. They're only hurting themselves. So, thank you for your time, City Council, everybody. Please consider the candidates running, including our awesome school board with ABC and ProCop on April 5th. And John Pavelski. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
To you. Keith Kudrowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Keith Kudrowski, 1536 Water Street. Thank you, Kevin, very much. Great description of the six people running. Truly hometown people. They know what this city's about. I'm going to paint with a little broader brush. Actually, don't need a broad brush. Kind of a narrow brush of the people they're running against. All five are not from this town. They moved here. They want to bring their politics here. Why bring in your politics? Why don't you just go back where that politics seemed to be so great? Maybe they don't want you back. I don't know. All either Democrats or aristocratic progressive type mentality of the Democrat Party. We know what's better for you. Just total line and keep quiet. Pretty much all receive their paychecks, government paychecks. I work private industry. All these guys make money. They pay taxes to support you people. You want to be the employee and the boss without investing any of your money into the game. So, unfortunately, one of the guys skated tonight, because I just have to quote the mentality of what I've seen from this council. District Two guy didn't show up tonight. We, the strategy of policy change through perseverance offers a way to overcome the high-decibel opposition by not taking their "we the people" pose at face value. Wow. The previous gentleman who read this stated, with all due respect, I cannot say I have any respect for a representative who claims he's willing to not listen to his constituents, his citizens, his fellow citizens. So, we have another one who claims he wanted to reopen negotiations and discussions about the Business 51, because he realizes he's got a challenger. He also conveniently isn't here in person. He is here online. But I highly doubt he really wanted to listen. It's an optics thing. He knows he's got a good, solid candidate running against him who's going to listen, who has listened to people and their concerns. So, like Kevin said, six great candidates. I'm hoping that when I come back next month, I'm glad to see all your faces. I haven't seen your faces, and some of you I don't even recognize. I hope to see some new faces next month when I come back. And yes, the school board people that are running, like Kevin said, ABC and Kerry, wonderful people. John Pavelski, great businessman. He's created more jobs than that whole board right sitting there. So, I heard the beeper. But I have to say, there is one, there is only one group in this town that's more restricted than you, and that is the school board. These people have not let people in for months. They actually let us in, had a teacher came and spoke on an item. He even complained about not being listened to. So, if they don't answer to the parents, to the community, or to the teachers, who do they respond to? Thank you. Sorry for going a little over.
Thank you. Louis Milewski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Louis Milewski. I'm the district attorney here in Portage County. And it's been kind of a tradition for me, and I know a lot of other candidates, that before their election, they come speak to the city Stevens Point council and the members and the voters. Do that again. And also, Mr. Quirk running the TV, and I think maybe not, John's not here, but, and the people who are not able to get to the meetings. I'm running for our children, your children, and all the children of people of Portage County. A judge has a lot of things that he or she has to do. And one of them is to take conflict, turn it into civility, and turn it into a decision. And only using the facts as presented, the law, and establishing that decision under the confines of that rule of law. And that's what I can guarantee you that I will do as your next judge. I can't guarantee how I'll vote on something. That is unethical. But I can tell you that for the people of this county, who have, I've gone to every township and every village in this county, and I end my little tour at the only first, only city in the county, the city of Stevens Point. They want a judge, and they want their elected leaders to listen, and they want to be heard. And in this regard, I can say this, that as district attorney, we have to listen to the public. We have to listen to victims, witnesses. If we don't, we don't have a court system. And I know your city attorney, who I work with on a monthly basis, we talk, we get along. And we do that because it's so important, because what we do in court has such lasting effects. I'm running for kids because we have a juvenile system that needs to be updated. We have a detention center. The mayor, of course, as a former county board supervisor knows, that will need some money. We have a building project that the voters said no, so now we have to make a decision. How do we move forward? Just so you know, our toilets, at one point, we couldn't flush them in the men's bathroom, because when they did flush, they went into the Stevens Point Police Department forensic evidence room, because the pipes in the wall were rotten. So, we need to spend a little money on that, ladies and gentlemen. I've had a great opportunity working with your police department, with your fire department, and I wish my best to Chief Cuso and also Chief Moody. I look forward to working with them as DA. And as April 5th comes closer and closer to closer, I can tell you this, that ultimately, what I ask for the voters is your support. But also, what I can say to you is that the election is very important. I'm a Portage County resident, lived here all my life. I know this community. I know the issues. I manage an office with 2,000 matters annually, and in my time, we've filed just under 10,000 cases. So, it's a very busy office, and I think that brings me that experience that is needed. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Robert Larson.
Robert Larson, 3283 Lindbergh Avenue, Stevens Point. I'm also a candidate for the 10th district. At the last city council meeting, I requested the city council provide an accident report on Business 51 for the last four years. Date of an accident, time of day, and where the accident occurred. I did not see this request on tonight's meeting agenda, so I went on the city's website and found some information regarding accidents in Stevens Point for the last four years. In 2018, 636 accidents at Stevens Point. 2019, 624. 2020, 400. And 2021, 576. Now, the Stevens Point Police Department has a top 25 incident locations. These are calls for service, but not necessarily accidents reports, just police calls. In 2018, it wasn't available. 2019, they had 2,276. 2020, they had 1,820. And 2021, they had 2,105. There were no deaths, except for the year 2021. There was one death. I did find one accident, Division Street, North Point Drive, the roundabout when that was put in. In 2019, had 48 accidents, which accounted for 8% of all the accidents in Stevens Point. Division Street and Fourth Avenue are not on the accident report. It looks safe to me, so why would you want to put a roundabout there and cause confusion? I would like to see the next city council meeting report on Business 51 showing accidents for the last four years, the date, the time, and where it happened. Because if you use the incident report to, on Business 51, to make it two lanes, that is not accurate, because the numbers reflect not just accidents, but also police calls. I also want to say about the public survey that you had put out. Did you guys look at this? Business 51 travelers believe lane reductions would have negative impact to traffic. Eighty-five to ninety percent agreed. Live near Business 51, 75% agree. Work near Business 51, 80 to 85 agree. Currently walk, bike, or use transit on Business 51, 55 to 60 agree. So, if you're actually listening to the people, you must have had blockers on your ears, because there's a lot of people that said it's not going to work. Thing about people today, you all know it, you're very, very busy. So, what's a real precious commodity? Time. One more thing, and then I'll be out of here. I got to thank Scott and Corey for sending me some information. Hang on. And one thing that I want to mention is that, this was from Scott. As a professional service, we are not required to bid the work, and therefore, we did not receive any proposals for the work from other firms. We negotiated directly with ECOM on a contract. We need you guys to authorize bids for large projects like fire trucks or Business 51 thing. Final thing is, as I'm walking around District 10, I'm looking at the roads as I'm walking. There are a lot of roads like Channel Drive, Rice Street, Lindbergh Avenue that need some work done. Why don't you guys claw back your money that you authorized to spend? $2 million for the bridge for bicycles over the Pullover River, because cars and trucks cannot drive on a bicycle bridge. But cars and trucks and bikes can drive on roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And just for sake of clarification, we do bid fire trucks. Pieces of equipment are not services. We have to bid all of those. And the work that would be done on the road is also bid out. I want to point out, too, that you asked to speak on one of the presentations. We don't do that. We don't do question and answer on the presentations. However, everyone has the ability to follow up with the presenter. So, if you have questions on either of the presentations, you can follow up with the presenter after the meeting. Okay? Tommy Bushman.
1317 Sunny Crest Drive. Tommy Bushman. I'm Jen Bushman's husband. Born in Stevens Point. Just want to give a little background about myself. Born in Stevens Point, right at St. Mike's. Grew up here. Love the community. When I graduated high school, enlisted into the Marine Corps. And whoever I would talk to, wherever I was, I was proud to tell them where I was from. Good, working, honest people from central Wisconsin. Came back here after the Marines went to college for four years, got to play for UWSP. I was so proud to wear that jersey. One of my childhood dreams, and I did it. Went back to California to be with my wife. We weren't married at the time. But when we planned on getting married, there was one place we both wanted to be married, in Stevens Point. So, we flew all our friends and family from California out here to get married here. Living in California, we had our firstborn child there. And my wife came up to me one day and said, I think we should raise our family in Wisconsin. I thought about it for half a second, and I said, yeah, let's go. Two weeks later, the U-Hauls were packed. We're on our way. When we got back here, well, when she first moved here, she started volunteering her time. Food drives, junior women's club, countless hours with that. She started getting involved in community, because we want to make a difference. So, when she came up to me one night and said, I want to run for school board, I said, yeah. I mean, she's got a lens that not many people have in this community. And now I can tell you, I am embarrassed of our town. I'm embarrassed of the hate that she gets every day. Where are our leaders? Where are they? The hatred spewed at her every day. It's embarrassing. Where are our leaders? I know leaders. In the Marines, I was up close and personal with them. I know leaders. Where are our leaders?
Stefan Klein.
Stefan Klein, 301 Union Street, District One candidate. I wanted to speak specifically about the, in regards to the public policy meeting of March 14th. I didn't make it to that one. First and foremost, I would like to give credit where it is due. Mr. Kanowski, the removal of the 60-day language is a great step in the right direction. I only hope we can see a lot more of this in the coming future. There are some minor critiques of the language that replaced it. However, I find myself happy overall with that change. Unfortunately, this is where my praise will have to end. As is becoming my practice, and since I am restricted on time, thankfully, since we all want this meeting to end sometime tonight, I will pick one and only one topic for discussion. The bit I would like to bring up is on page 38, the addition of the wording, quote, "decrease of surrounding property value," unquote. Now, I want to make it clear that I do not believe anyone within the council or department have any malicious schemes, and to the best of my knowledge, is working with the best of intentions. However, lest us forget, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. And we know how fiery a topic paving roads is right now. When showing this to a law student, she told me this was pretty standard language, which I will concede this is true. I am not necessarily satisfied, though, given that the origins of such language and ordinances having come from certain regions in a certain time with the specific intent of preventing people of certain ethnicity from moving into and ruining, ruining the maintained ethnic monoculture. So, the question here is, are we trying to exclude or segregate people within our community? And if not, why are we adopting this language? Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Bushman.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Bushman. I'm a candidate for school board, and I am here to share my experience running for local office. A lot of firsts for me while campaigning. First time I'm running for public office, first time I've been called a racist, Nazi, fascist, and right-wing extremist. First time I've been bullied, harassed, trolled online at my home and in town, and intimidated by adults. And first time I've had to file a police report due to concerns for my safety. Tonight, I can add, first time speaking at a city council meeting. As a diverse woman who grew up in an ultra-diverse community and moved to this, across the country, into this not-so-diverse city more than a decade ago, now running for school board and the only person-of-color woman candidate, I find it incomprehensible and disheartening that I have to defend why I'm not anti-diversity as many bullies claim. For the record, I'm half-Chinese and half-Irish. My mother emigrated from Taichung, Taiwan, and half of my family still resides there. My father lives in the Philippines, and I'm raising three multiracial children here in Stevens Point. I grew up experiencing racism, so to hear members of my community boldly proclaim that I am a Klan member, bigot, white supremacist, Nazi, and alt-right hurts. Lots of talk about inclusion and diversity. I can't help but wonder if my mistreatment would be more, if everyone cared more about my mistreatment if I was running on a progressive ticket. I say this because I've seen many screenshots of blatant misinformation, outright lies, and seemingly obsessive activities centered around me and my running mates on local Facebook pages like the progressives of central Wisconsin. Increasing dysfunction and political polarization is plaguing this election in our community. This is politics at its ugliest and most destructive form, and overshadows what should be at the core of every single interaction: respect. So I look to the leaders in this room. You can spend all the time in the world strategizing and planning for the betterment of our community, but the reality is, if our community continues to lose our open minds, our curiosity, our ability to empathize and coexist regardless of political leanings, our tolerance and common ground, our human decency and hearts like we are now, then none of that matters. This should not be my experience. This should not be anyone's experience. Nobody should have to fear for their safety because they chose to run for public office and serve our community. And regardless of our politics, we still need to coexist. This community is divided, and this community is hurt. Please address that.
Thank you very much. That concludes our non-agenda items. And anyone registered to speak, that has been exhausted. So we will move on now to our presentations. First up, we have Melissa Johnson, who is the County Healthcare Center Chairperson, and she will be giving us an update on the health. County Healthcare Center, she did bring a presentation to share. And I gotta do this all at once here. Let's see, get back to Zoom, share my screen.
While we're waiting for our technology to pop up here.
All good.
You good?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Johnson, and for the past six years, I've been the county board supervisor for District 3. And as a part of my duties, I was assigned to a number of committees, as all supervisors are. And the first committee I was assigned to was the Healthcare Center. And for two years, I served as a member, and for the last four years, I've been the chair of the Healthcare Center. You know, there's some things that happen in your life, like, you know, when your children are born, you get that first perfect job. Serving on this Healthcare Center Committee and serving as chair and shepherding this along in a collaborative way, I know some people find that hard to believe. It has been one of the greatest joys of my life. And in fact, I chaired my last Healthcare Center Committee meeting last Wednesday night, and I cried like a baby because it has been so joyful even though it has been so very challenging. How many of you know someone or have a loved one who has lived at the Healthcare Center? Yeah. It is a fabulous place, and we all know it's been around a long time, and it needs repair or something new. How many of you think that a skilled nursing facility or a nursing home is really where old people go to end out their lives? It's not. It's a place where, as we say, helping our neighbors return to a normal life. And the first one, click please.
Oh, come on. It was supposed to work.
There we go.
It was still active on Zoom.
So the woman in this photo, in both of these photos, with the coral gave birth to me 66 years ago, this past Friday. That's my mother, Donna Johnson. She was an Assistant Clerk of Courts for Portage County. She was, she worked for Social Services, so some of you may remember when Social Services was at the courthouse where Corporation Council now resides. And before that, she worked at the Stevens Point YMCA. Couple of years ago, 2019, actually, she had a stroke. She had been living independently. And she now resides at the Portage County Healthcare Center. And on that wall in that first photo where she's sitting in the wheelchair, on that wall, you can't quite see it, yeah, she's got her kids up there, but you know what photos she has up there? A couple of the staff, the CNAs that care for her. She loves them so much that their photos are front and center, and then all of the rest of us kids are kind of below that. So that's how much the folks at the Portage County Healthcare Center love their patients and take care of them. But the other thing about, click please. The other thing about the Portage County Healthcare Center is that most of our patients don't stay with us for very long. We return them to a normal life. And even though my mother is living at the Healthcare Center, her normal life now is enjoying a game of cards with her friends and a Friday night Old Fashioned. They do enjoy those once in a while. But most of our patients are rehab patients, so they've had a hip replacement, a knee replacement. They have nobody at home. They need to leave the hospital, and they need that extra care. The Portage County Healthcare Center provides that. The woman in this photo, her name is Carlin, and I do have her permission, by the way, to show this. The quote there is from Carlin. She was diagnosed with MS in her 30s. It got progressively worse, and it got to the point where she could no longer live independently. I first met Carlin in 2018, and she told me her story. She wanted to die. When she could no longer live independently, she wanted to die. She went to the Portage County Healthcare Center for a long recovery, both physical and mental health. And as you can see from her very beautiful photo there with the dogs, and that's her van that she gets around our community, she lives independently, and she does all kinds of things. She's an artist. She loves horses. I have one photo of her with a pistol at a shooting range, and apparently, she's very good at it. But her quote there comes from her heart. "The staff make it home for its residents. Peace of mind in quality care." Portage County Healthcare Center priceless. Next, please. Just a brief history. Lot of you, if you're my age, you probably remember the home sitting there. I went to 6th grade at McKinley. I did elementary school up till 6th grade in Junction City, but I was a 6th grader at McKinley, and I was in choir, and we had to go to the Healthcare Center at Christmas and sing to the residents. I don't know if they liked it. They acted like they did. I was terrified. I remember being so terrified because it's an old facility. And I was surrounded by all of these old people, and of course, in my 12-year-old brain, I didn't quite understand that. I didn't understand that Portage County has been providing care for 100 years. And in that location on the corner of Whiting and Water Street, they've been there since 1931, and then the one addition was added in the 70s. They provide a wide range of care, including, of course, the skilled nursing, which is that regular hospital care, hospice care, of course, that's end-of-life care, dementia and memory care, and again, that rehab service. These are usually two weeks, maybe three months at the most, and then respite care. Any of you have provided regular care for a loved one 24/7? You know how it is. You never get away. The respite care gives you the opportunity to get away. You can have an overnight vacation. You need to go for a wedding out of town. The Healthcare Center can take care of your loved one, so you get a break, so you can go on that vacation, so that you can have that weekend wedding away. Yes. But I think, as all of you know, anything that is 70, 80 years old, like I say, I turned 66 this last Friday, things don't work the way they used to. And the facility is in sore need of repair or replacement. The boiler, it works, thankfully. Otherwise, our residents would be freezing. It has no air conditioning. The rooms have not enough outlets for all the devices that our residents have. They have laptops and iPads and cellphones and games. So we went to the voters in 2018 and said, "We need to solve this." And Mayor Wiesa probably remembers his time on county board because this has been a discussion very much like the jail, as our DA was talking about. Nobody could figure out what direction to go. What the Healthcare Center Committee decided was, "We need some time. Give us some time," because we were on the edge of closing, and it would have meant our loved ones would not have a place here in Stevens Point. Very likely, they would have been placed across the state. We asked the voters for up to $1.4 million because, of course, we have levy caps. And if we would have taken that $1.4 million from the county budget, it could have hurt the library. It could have hurt Highway Department, Health and Human Services. It could have hurt a lot of other departments. So we went to the voters. And in November of 2018, we were able to successfully pass a referendum to increase the levy by $1.4 million, or up to $1.4 million, for four years of funding. And we very specifically said, "What's the bare money, bare amount we need to get by? And what is the timeframe?" Let's put a timeframe on it because we've seen the county repeatedly push things down the road. I said, "Let's put parameters around this: four years." It passed. 65%, I believe it was, so that's a pretty, pretty good margin. And we're very grateful to the voters. It gave us the time as policymakers to make a deliberate choice on the future of that facility. A lot of this I'll go through fairly quickly. It's complicated. It took me a long time. If you would have asked me six years ago, "Do you know what a skilled nursing facility is or a payer mix is?", I would have said absolutely no. So a skilled nursing facility is that really intense care, regular nursing care, as we would refer to as a nursing home. We had to find out what the market looked like because the Healthcare Center should be run like an enterprise fund. I run an enterprise fund in my department at Marathon County. We use no tax dollars. Everything that we earn to pay our bills, including my wages, comes from the fees we charge for the services at the landfill. The Healthcare Center is an enterprise fund and should run in that fashion as well. So we evaluated the market. How many beds are out there? What's the demand in the future? More people are aging in place. We have home healthcare, and we hired experts because we're not. And we hired Clifton Larson Allen, now just going by CLA, to help us map out what that looks like. And at the bottom, you see that payer mix thing, and this is really important. The cost of providing nursing care usually runs between $350 to $500 a day. Medicare, Medicare and Medicaid reimburse between about $155 and $175 a day. So that's why that payer mix is really important because if we get rehab care, so that's usually private insurance or Medicare Plus or Medicare Advantage, they have a higher reimbursement rate. So when those higher reimbursements come in, it helps the business manage its costs a little bit better. Go ahead. So from September 2020 until now, or earlier in 20, or later in 2021, we worked on a strategic plan. So the Healthcare Center Committee, along with administration and all of our experts, again, because I'm not an expert in nursing markets. I am not an expert in Medicare reimbursements. I am not an expert in skilled nursing. So we used all of our experts. We used financial planners, and we came up with a strategic plan. And some of the key points was, that facility is old. It is, we found out that it would take $12 to $15 million just to bring it up to code. Get a new roof, new boiler, bring in a new HVAC system. Throwing good money after bad was probably not the best choice. We realized that investment in technology would actually increase efficiencies for staff. I've toured, actually, on my own time. I request no reimbursement for the county, several other private facilities and public facilities around the state, skilled nursing facilities. When they built their new facilities, the use of technology allowed their staff to work more efficiently and to connect more thoroughly with hospitals. So when a patient comes in, all of those records, from whether it's a hip replacement or a stroke or a surgery, have to be transferred. If you don't have adequate software to merge those, everything has to be entered by hand. Yeah, I saw your, yeah. So we found out that by investing in technology, we can actually increase efficiencies. And new facility designs are designed for efficiency, and I found out that when you build a new facility, you can actually employ 15% less staff because of those efficiencies. And we would continue to work, and because we work very closely with our hospitals and our clinics and all of our providers because we need those referrals. People just don't knock on our door and say, "Hey, we need healthcare." We work with all the doctors throughout the region, not just Portage County. And we actually looked at joining forces with Marathon County because they have a skilled nursing facility at North Central Healthcare. And we were right on the cusp of creating a regional skilled nursing facility with Portage County, Marathon County, and Lincoln County. Unfortunately, that fell through, not because of us, because of Marathon County.
Chair Johnson, I just want to be cognizant of the time. The 15 minutes has about two minutes left, and you got half the slides.
Okay. Yep. We'll go through this. I've been spending my life on this. So yeah, go ahead. Next one.
And it's an important topic. You just have to be cognizant of all the time.
So this is more of what we've been doing, a lot of outreach, a lot of surveys, public listening sessions, again, to get to the point to this. Next, please. In January, the county board opted to go to a referendum for building a new healthcare center and to ask for additional money to operate the facility. And this is, again, based on the fact that we found out that the market is deficient in skilled nursing beds, and that we can actually build a plan for the future. You'll see this. We're asking for the money to build the facility as a part of that money, and it'll go through the debt service. So every year, you would see the debt service along with operational costs. You can vote yes or no. If you vote yes, the impact, and I'm quoting Zillow, March 2022, they're saying the median price of a home in Portage County is around $210,000. I think that's a little high, but the market's crazy. The impact on your taxes would be about $152 a year. Sorry about that. If you say no, the facility will close. We have no other option. And then, of course, all of those residents will be relocated according to the state standards throughout the state because we don't have enough beds here in Portage County. Go ahead. This is what the facility will look like, hopefully. It may have some other rendition, but it's open and airy and spacious. Go ahead. You'll see 5,700 square feet. We will, or 57,000, sorry. See all the services that we're intending to provide. We will have CBRF, Community-Based Residential Facility. That is for those people who cannot be readmitted back into the hospital. They don't need skilled nursing. The hospitals don't want them back because it affects their Medicare reimbursements to the hospital. So this will serve as an ancillary opportunity for rehab for patients and actually serve to support the hospitals. So we're not competing with the hospitals here. We're actually complementing them. And then, this is very complicated. The big thing with this, and you can see this online, the big thing is up to 4.5 million. If you look at the business plan, you will see that we are not taking the full 4.5 million. And in fact, if you look at the revenues, the CBRF actually complements the revenues because there's a higher reimbursement rate from Medicare and Medicaid and private insurances. We would start with debt service in 2023 if the referendum is approved. Go ahead. The team, this has been a massive endeavor of a lot of people working collaboratively, members of the public, all of our consultants. Executive Holman's been enormously helpful. His team, just top-notch. His team, just top notch. Administrator Marsha McDonald, if any of you know her, thank her for her wonderful service to this community. And of course, the Portage County Healthcare Center Committee members for the last four years. There's tons of information, this is on the county's website. Please feel free to visit this to learn more. I am happy to take questions, of course, not right now. I know quite a bit, but if I don't know everything, I will definitely find the answers for you and direct you to the right person. So other than that, thank you, I'm sorry, did I go long?
It's all right, we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is an important topic, and I urge people to educate themselves. If you have questions or want more information, contact Chair Johnson, or personally, call me, and I'm going to tell you why you should vote yes. I'm going to stop the sharing here. And our next-
Mr. Mayor, there is some of these sheets, these informational sheets for those. I gave one to all of the council members, but there's some on the back desk. And it's just a quick fact, so you don't have to dive into the entire website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presenter, you know, it's funny, this is Women's History Month, and this young lady I met last fall when she started school here, and she is nothing short of inspiring. Want to talk about women's history? Give it a few years and you're going to see this woman in history. I want to present to you Maria Koval, who is a student at SPAS, an exchange student from the Ukraine, separated from her family with everything going on. And she's going to tell us a little bit about what has been going on, and most importantly, how you can help. Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my name is Maria Koval, and as was mentioned, I'm an exchange student from Ukraine. I think that you all know about events that are going on in my country right now. And actually, the whole world froze when it became known on February 24th that Russia has invaded Ukraine. I think that a lot of people heard that in his speech, Putin said that Ukrainian Republic was invented, and this country was not, was unworthy of its sovereignty and independence. But actually, Ukraine, it is a separate, independent nation. And the historical reality of modern-day Ukraine is more complex than Putin's version of events, encompassing a thousand-year history of changing religions, borders, and peoples. Millions of Ukrain, millions of people from Ukraine were displaced, and some of them are on the front lines of battle with Russia. Some of them are awaiting the end of the invasion. And for me, those people were never associated with propagandistic people or Nazis, but they're just ordinary people, my parents, neighbors, friends, and relatives. Numerous media outlets and organizations around the world have issued statements condemning Russia's attack on Ukraine and calling for an immediate cessation of hostilities, as well as for humanitarian assistance as the conflict develops. Russian troops are destroying key civilian infrastructure, shelling residential areas of Ukrainian cities and towns. A number of cities are on the verge of a humanitarian catastrophe. Thousands of people are in urgent need of evacuation due to lack of food, drinking water, medicine, electricity, water, and access to medical care. And this story is very personal to me because I was born and raised in Chernigiv. Chernigiv is my hometown, and it was just taken from me on February 24th. My mom left the country, but my dad stays there and wants to protect our country. I didn't have a lot of connection with him because they have no water, electricity, and cellular service, obviously. So I'm here to share ways that people can, share the ways that people can help and just get involved in this situation to help people in need in Ukraine. There are so many organizations operating locally and all around the world that actively support people in Ukraine and refugees seeking safety elsewhere with medical and humanitarian assistance. So one of the ways to help is to support Ukraine financially. There are several ways to do this through different organizations focusing on specific issues, using special accounts to help healthcare institutions, or Ukrainian military, or through public initiatives and funds. And from hundreds of different charity organizations, I think that the most you can use are Humanitarian Assistance Fund organized by the National Bank, as well as the organization called Come Back Alive. It is a non-governmental organization that helps military activists that protect our country right now. You, I think that you know that many children are still in the epicenters of hostilities, hiding from shellings in bomb shelters, basements of houses, and metro stations. Mothers were forced to spend nights in bomb shelters to leave their homes to save their children. And UNICEF is the organization that accepts donations to repair schools damaged by explosions. They also provide emergency assistance to children affected by the conflict and ensure a better future for them. UNICEF, UNICEF also helps with emergency education supplies, tracking safe water to conflict-affected areas, support mobile child protection teams, providing psychological care to children traumatized by insecurity and cases of violence. They also work with municipalities to ensure that there is immediate help for children and families in need. Russia's full-scale war with Ukraine is a threat to the entire civilized world. And printed and online publications cover key events on a daily basis condemning the aggression of Russia and its allies. Such attention of foreign media to Ukraine is now very important because it helps to combat misinformation of Russian propaganda. One of the best ways to help the most vulnerable in Ukraine is to be aware of what is happening and change information that is reliable. Spread information about what is happening in Ukraine. Help to find and block fake information, publish posts on social networks, and influence public figures and politicians in this country. It is very important to, not only helping financially, but also help other people to know different ways how to get involved in this, and post information about charity organizations that I have mentioned before. There are also so many petitions that you can find online that you can sign if you feel that you, that you can help this way. Among them are those that declare this war, this regime a war crime, and petition to end relations with Russian companies. And just to conclude, I want to say that no matter what way to help you choose, it is very important to encourage other people to participate, to support, read, learn, share, act, and stand up against Russian severe aggression towards Ukraine, against this crime, against humanity, and a complete threat to democracies all over the world. I know that this community is very united, and I met so many people willing to help. And I know that a lot of people in Ukraine see this, and they really appreciate that they are not alone, and there are people all around the world who can help and who want to help and support, no matter what is going on. I believe that one day it ends, and we will all have this bright future with friends and families. So I just wanted to say thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Maria, one quick question. You mentioned that your mother had fled, and she's in Portugal. And thank you for sharing that, but you mentioned your father stayed. No plumbing, no electricity, no cell service. When was the last time you talked to your father?
I think maybe when, the first day when it started. I just called them and said to my parents that the war started, and they didn't know that it was going on, just doing their daily stuff, preparing for the new workday. So it was three, three weeks ago.
Thank you very much for sharing. I know your parents are very proud of you. I know your community here is very proud of you, and I got to believe that every single person in your country is proud of everything you're doing. She has some links to various aid websites and information websites. As she mentioned, getting the actual truth is a big help. But if you wanted to provide any sort of assistance, I will get these links posted on my social media page. We'll have them up on the city website, and you can find them there. She also is working with Dan Hoppy, one of our local teachers, selling shirts. These were available, you're at the Winter Farmers Market. Those are there to show support as well.
Yeah, it was organized, it was an initiative of Belts.
Yep, Belts, yep. You can still get the ice cream and the shirts at Belts.
You can order them online, too.
If you need a ice cream, maybe after council tonight, we'll all go. Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, now, on to our agenda. Item number six is our consent agenda.
Recording stopped.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is second. Seconded by, we'll give the second to Fishler. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number seven is a resolution, a request from James Yakush for a conditional use permit to construct duplexes on three unaddressed parcels off of Doodle Drive, with parcels identified in your packet, their zoned R4 multifamily one residential, and it is consistent with Chapter 23.01, Sub 13, Sub F.
To move.
Motion by Slawinski to approve, seconded by Dalton. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
Christensen?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
And that is approved. Director Lemke, the recording was done by Isaac Dinason with the media. That's not our recording, but that's what you heard when he got offline, or stopped recording, rather. Item number eight is a resolution, a request from Lucas Medow, representing the Stevens Point Area School District, for a conditional use permit to, to perform interior and exterior improvements to Bannock Elementary School located at 5400 Walter Street with the parcel identified, again, consistent with Chapter 23.02, Sub 1, Sub B, Sub 3, Sub F.
Move to approve.
Motion by Niebon. Second, we'll give the second to Keemer.
I'll just say, this will really help the school a lot. It'll alleviate a lot of traffic problems, make it a lot safer for kids coming in and out, and it's a good project all, all around.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number nine is a resolution, again, or I'm sorry, this is a request from Ryan Want to, representing Great Northern Distilling, to modify an adopted conceptual plan for the planned development of the property located at 1009 Second Street, parcel identified in your packet, consistent with Chapter 23.02, Sub 1, Sub F, Sub 3, Sub G.
Motion.
Motion to approve by President Johnson, seconded by Christensen. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 10 is a resolution, a request from Les Dobie, representing Parkdale Development LLC, for a conditional use permit to construct a senior living facility at an unaddressed parcel off of Songbird Lane, parcel identified in your packet, and an unaddressed, unaddressed parcel off of Badger Avenue with the parcel identified in your packet, consistent with Chapter 23.02, Sub 1, Sub F, Sub 3, Sub G.
I will move to approve.
Seconded by Slawinski. Discussion.
Also, District 7. Here in the spotlight tonight.
District 7 night. Okay, hearing and seeing none, no more discussion, clerk, please call that roll.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 11 is to award the contract 1022 Roofing Utility Project with base bids 1 and 2 to Nick Michaels &amp; Son, Inc. of Nikusa, in the amount not to exceed $295,794.95, including the allowable contingency of 15%.
Motion.
We'll give a motion to Johnson, second to Dalton. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 12 is to award contract 2216 Fiber Optic Project to Alexo, sounds like a superhero, Inc. of Seymour, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed $246,057.88, which also includes the allowable contingency of 15%. Motion by Dalton, seconded by Fishler. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 13 is to award the contract 2210 Utility Roofing Project, the base bid 3 to Badger Coating and Insulation of Rochelt, not to exceed $8,970, including a 15% contingency.
Excuse me, I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
In the packet, it says Nick Michaels &amp; Sons.
Director?
It's page 69 of the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Did you hear the question?
Not exactly.
In our packet on page 69, it says, the bid to Nick Michaels &amp; Son, and the agenda says Badger Coating and Insulation.
Yes.
So the first two, it's, it's actually the same bid, okay? So it opened as, as one total bid, but there were three bids within it.
Right.
The first two go to, the first award, Nick Michaels &amp; Sons, and the third one for the airport is Badger, so.
Okay, so the memo in, on page 69 of our packet is not exactly correct. Should be Badger Coatings and Insulation LLC of Rochelt, because the memo says bid base 3 to Nick Michaels &amp; Sons.
Oh, yes, my apologies, that should be Badger. Good call.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the agenda is correct, the packet is not. The motion would be to approve the bid in the amount of $8,970 to Badger Coating and Insulation LLC of Rochelt, which includes the contingency of 15%. Move by Slawinski, seconded by Zarazua. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Keemer? Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 14 is a preliminary resolution for the installation of storm sewer laterals for the 2022 Streets Improvement Project 22-01. Information was in your packet. Move by Dalton? We'll give the second to Slawinski. I turned my head already. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 15 is consideration of a temporary pay differential for late shift street repair. The memo is in your packet. This is in conjunction with our new infrared patching machine, which is freaking fabulous. This will allow us to have a second rotation and utilize that machine from sunup to sundown, fixing some of those streets that Mr. Larson had mentioned earlier and allow us to gain some ground on pothole filling. Temporary only.
But the repairs are much longer lasting than.
Yes, to give everybody a brief, a brief thing. Cold patch will, you're lucky if it lasts a couple of months. Hot patch might last a season. This infrared patch is going to last years.
Yes.
So it's going to allow us to gain some ground on that. Honestly, I'd purchase a second one already and maybe you'll see that when we do the capital budget in fall. But this is a temporary project. We're going to see how it goes, up to four people. Do a shift differential for $1 an hour more than what they make on their normal shift and they would be working till dark as soon as time allows and ending on June 30th, which is about when the patching season ends. So we should get a lot more done.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Christensen, seconded by Dalton. Discussion. Let's go with Keemer first.
I just had a question on what defines non-traditional hours.
So we haven't set those hours yet and we're not even sure we're going to get volunteers to do it for a dollar an hour, but I'm told that that's probably the tri- tipping point. So the non-traditional hours, normally a street's employee, the majority of the street's employees work from about 7:00 in the morning till about 2:00 in the afternoon, 3:00 in the afternoon. This would create a second shift, if you will, working from probably 2:00 to 9:00.
Okay.
Dark-ish, because we want to be able to patch till dark and the times are going to change, so that may shift a little bit as far as specific times.
Okay.
But it's just for those four people who will be working on the patching.
There you go, thanks.
Zarazua.
Yeah, I guess my only question is, you know, we already have streets workers that do work in the night, right? When there's plowing and street sweeping and.
Plowing is as needed and the street sweeping have two people on it for sweeping, sweeping streets.
Okay.
That's, that's their job.
Do they get shift differentials?
They do not, because that's their job.
Okay.
No, they were hired as sweepers, so that's, that's a night job, so that's what they do. The same thing would happen for PD, I mean, they work at night or sometimes we have emergencies at the water department. If this goes over well, though, we may look at doing that with some other departments, just so you know.
Just something, I mean, just thinking. It might feel unfair to workers. Yes, I understand the temporary nature of it, but.
Okay, anything else? Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
And that is approved. One final note on that, if you see the patch crews out or any of the road crews, slow down. I can't tell you, I've been out with the crews a couple of times and people are nuts with the driving. So for safety sake, slow down. If you want to see the new machine in action, give me a call. I'll give you a demonstration, but don't do it while you're driving.
What's your number?
Right, item number 16 is an ordinance amendment regarding special event permits, Chapter 21, I'm sorry, 12.28.
Motion.
I'm up to approve.
Motion by Johnson, seconded by Fishler. Discussion there? This kind of streamlines the whole process. Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 17 is a land use restriction agreement, GenCap Dana and Stevens Point 102 LLC and Steven, the city of Stevens Point for property at 1300 Maria Drive, the convent development. Motion by Zarazua, I wasn't sure if it was a question or not.
I'll second.
Seconded by Niebone. Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 18 is related, a collateral assignment of development agreement between GenCap Dana, Stevens Point 102, and the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority and the city of Stevens Point for a property located at 1300 Maria Drive. Moved by Zarazua, seconded by Keemer. Discussion. They're all related to the convent development, as you know. Okay, clerk, please call that roll.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Item number 19 should get you off your seats and moving. Is approval of awarding the Mead Park Pickleball Court Project to Upper Midwest Athletic Construction in an amount not to exceed $51,524. This is turning the existing tennis courts at Mead Park, which are underutilized, into six fully functional regulation pickleball courts, about half of what the Stevens Point Area Pickleball Association wanted for tournaments, but we will have our first exclusive pickleball courts in the city, hopefully opening by June 1st, should you approve this tonight.
We want more at Emerson once we get that all done.
There you go.
Move to approve.
Motion by Niebone, seconded by Dalton.
I'd like to try it.
I got to invite Mary Rosenberg down for a rematch, because she picked my butt up there. Any questions there? Hearing none, can we get a roll call, please, clerk?
Christensen.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
And that's approved. If pickleball isn't your game, maybe belly flops or laps are. And item number 20 is to approve the awarding of the Donald Cops Municipal Pool Replastering Project to Badger Swim Pools in the amount not to exceed $180,642. Moved by Keemer, seconded by Dalton. Discussion. Hearing none, one more roll call, please.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 21 is consideration of a claim from Richard Wanta regarding cracks in his garage floor. You saw the information in your packet and our insurance company's recommendation. Are you, did you skip one? Did I?
Nope. No, consideration of the claim.
Yep, no, 21, we're good.
21.
Sorry.
The insurance company's recommendation, by the way, is to deny the claim.
It's motion to deny.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Seconded by Johnson. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
And that is approved. Next item comes to us from Lynn Markham, who I served next to for several years on city council. And the idea came, worked on it with Director Kornowski, for the Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Economic Development Policy Guidebook. I was talking earlier and I want to be very clear on this. This policy is only for developments that are going to seek a city incentive. Whether or not those developers charge for the electricity is completely up to them. But it's without our rights, since they're using TIF incentive or some other city incentive, we can put certain requirements on. They already have things like setbacks and bike parking, that sort of thing. This is adding one more thing in the hopes that we can add some more electric vehicle infrastructure within the city. You'll see some additional information regarding city policies on city property coming forward in the coming weeks, but this one is specifically for those developers that seek city incentive.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Johnson, seconded by Fishler.
That's fine.
That's okay, we got a lot of support, I know. Discussion.
It's just, I, I was lucky enough to see an early version of this and I, I've been waiting for it, so I'm very excited about that. I worked with Lynn and Anna on this a little bit, so.
Thank you. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 23 is to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session on the following: An update to council on the boundary agreement discussion with the Town of Hall and negotiating the potential purchase of properties within the Town of Hall. We will not be returning into open session, therefore, the, the room will be closed and we won't be coming back into open session for any action, those on Zoom with the exception of older person Leek. And our directors and staff, of course, will be booted out. So I need a motion to go into closed session. Motion by Johnson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Niebone. And a roll call vote, please.
Christensen.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
All righty, so camera can go off and I am going to ask the.